Is this the right meeting?
Yes, it is.
I've probably said this before, but this is the exact opposite of every Zoom call with my family.
Jeff, you're on mute.
Okay, we are beginning our regular meeting and we actually officially began our meeting a little while ago. So now I will ask everyone to join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. And to the Republic. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight we have no special recognitions unfortunately. But we do have some additions, corrections and modifications to the agenda. 6.01 addendum to Agenda Item 10.04 Approval Personnel Items. 6.02 Addition of Agenda Item 10.24 Approval of the D S Contract. 6.03 Addition of Agenda Item 10.25 Approval of the Early Separation Incentive Plan. Next, we have citizen statements. I do not have any citizen statements tonight. So I will move on to the approval of the agenda. They have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for May 6, 2020. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, June 10, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM. The meeting will be streamed live. Next, Board Liaison Reports. Anyone have anything they would like to share? Nothing? Okay, I will just, I'll just mention a couple of quick things. First, I'd like to commend the community for the continued support for our food pantry. To date, we've had well over $100,000 donated just in the last, less than two months. So the support for the food pantry and those it serves has been greatly appreciated. Also, want to mention the Teacher Appreciation Week and Day yesterday, as well as National School Nurse Day and Week that we're enjoying today. Those groups of people obviously play vital roles in our, in our school buildings every week, every day. And we can't wait to have them back, but for now, we'll continue engaging with them remotely, so. Next, we have no upcoming Subcommittee Reports, no upcoming Subcommittee Meetings to report about. So next, we'll move on to 10.0 Action Items. We have a list of 25 action items which have all been reviewed by the Board. So may have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the May 6, 2020 Board Materials. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries 7-0. We have no individual action items tonight. We have no policy review tonight. And we have no reports tonight. However, we do have a work session. So joining us tonight are Patty Bedborough, Parkway CFO, and Brian Whittle, Director of Finance, to present the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Welcome, Brian and Patty.
Good evening. How are you this evening?
Great.
Wonderful. So what we have prepared for you tonight is a summary of the work that we have been doing over the last several months. We will begin with a review of what our budget assumptions were way back in December. We'll then take you through some of the changes that we made based on our revenue changes with the financial institution tax. And then we'll follow it up with some of the additional changes we had to take based on the COVID situation that we are in currently. So just a reminder too, that a budget is a flexible document at a point in time. We do review and amend the budget throughout the year. So normally, we bring the preliminary budget to you to be approved prior to the beginning of July. So by June 30th, and then we always bring an amendment along with a final budget for the fall. And that's usually once all of our hiring has taken place and we've set our tax rate, et cetera. And then as we progress into the spring, we usually have some final adjustments that we need prior to closing out the year. So last month, you approved our spring budget for the fiscal year 2020. So what we have for you this evening is a summary of the work and where we stand. In our planning for fiscal year 2021. Following this meeting, we will begin our preparation of our budget book with all of the details included in that. And that will be presented to you for your consideration at the first June Board Meeting. So we'll begin. Way back in December, we had discussed with you what we felt were obtainable revenue goals for this upcoming year. We started with, you know, looking at our revenue. So know that our largest revenue sources are from local sources. So you know what, how about I share my screen? Pardon me, forgot that stuff. Sorry about that. So our largest revenue source, of course, comes from local sources. Included in there are property taxes which make up about 70% of our operating expenses. And also included in there is our second largest source of revenue, which is from sales tax or also known as Prop C funding. Included in there also are our tuition dollars we receive for our VIC students or our students that reside in the city and attend our schools. And miscellaneous revenues including community ed. When we looked at our budget in November and December and presented the assumptions to you, we were looking at a CPI growth of about a 0.5% for this upcoming year. And then in reassessment years, looking at a 2% growth. Because that was our latest Consumer Price Index. We presented the new construction growth. We estimated collection rates to be about 96.2% for the current fiscal year, but forecasted an improvement in that of 96.5% in future years. Prop C, we were looking at $1,010 per weighted ADA for the current year. And then a $5 growth in each subsequent year. Interest rates were finally steady and approaching a million dollars for the year. And then we also had, of course, our financial institution tax that we had budgeted at 5 million. But as you know, we had the loss of the 4.4 million from that line item. We had a slight growth in county revenues of 1%. And a very slight change in state revenues reflected mostly from our growth in enrollment. So as you, you can see from the chart, we also have very low state revenues as compared to most of the state of Missouri. So under 5%. So we really depend on our property taxes as our main source of growth. Here is our estimated new construction that we presented. Based on even COVID, we're not estimating a change in this. We know that even in the short term, that construction has gone on. And we also know that any construction that we will have as part of our fiscal year 21 will be new construction that was completed as of January 1, 2020. Reminder of the breakdown of our revenue. So we have combined about 86% of our revenues comes from salaries and benefits. So we're very much a people orientated entity. Our supplies make up 7.4%, our purchase services 5.3%, and then student activities making up the remaining portion of our operating expenditures. Looking at our enrollment for the upcoming years, we have slight growth in our residential population. As you can see, we have forecasted the elimination or the gradual elimination of the VIC program. So anyone that has been a Parkway student gets to remain in the system. And then we are just accepting any siblings in those years. Plus, if there's room, then we will take in new students as well. So a very, very steady enrollment trend. And then we look at our projections by level. So why do we look at enrollment? Why is that so important to us? Well, our staffing is all based on what our enrollment numbers are. So to properly staff with our class size restrictions at elementary and at the secondary levels, it is very important to have projections of our enrollment. As you can see, we are projecting to increase in our elementary enrollment and a slight decrease in our secondary levels. Since we met in December, we have also finalized some of our negotiations with our employment groups. So with our teachers, we had a 3.43% increase. Our nurses, a 3.26% increase. CWA was already determined from their contract at 2.76%. And then our support staff at 2.8 and our administrators at 3.2%. As mentioned, you know, staffing is directly tied to enrollment. So we look at those future projections and add in to our budget any needed FTE changes. Also this year, we took on the comprehensive staffing study. In the reductions that were obtained through this study for 2021, we will be adding in the positions that are needed for the first phase of the Mental Health Task Force additions. So care coordinators, I believe is the title at all the middle schools. And then we will also have the additional staffing that's needed for McKelvey Primary. Phase two of the comprehensive staffing study will have the influx of the personalized learning positions for the secondary level and then additional mental health task force additions. So when we were looking at the snapshot in December, we were looking at some things that included transfers into our capital projects fund. We saw the, you know, estimated fund balance growth and we had rather strong revenues. Which then culminated to Mr. Seltzer's favorite slide along with Dr. Marty's favorite slide. And that's our breakdown of our fund balances. And why is this so important? And it's very important, I will say, especially now at this point in time, because it reminds us what happened back at the last recession, where we had very low or negative growth in our revenues, but our expenditures had a high pace of expenditure growth. That combined made our fund balances essentially slide like a ski slope down. We've been trying to recover ever since we went through massive budget reductions, culminated with just very slow growth over that time. We're still borrowing funds through tax anticipation notes each fall. We hope that in this upcoming fall, we can have year-round cash. But we're not positive that we will yet. But we want to be cautious and conscientious so that as we hit these times that potentially a new recession, that we want to be able to curb our expenditures in enough time so that we do not have a fund balance slide again. So now just to pause and then go through our first impact, and that is the loss of the financial institution tax. Brian, do you want to lead us through this part?
Good evening. As Patty Muck noted before, our shortfall from the financial institution tax was about 4.4 million this year. Just to give you an idea, a couple of slides ago, we were looking at our preliminary, yes, that 4.4 million was more than our surplus every year. We lose 4.4 million, we definitely have to make cuts, otherwise our expenditures will be higher than our revenues. We're at that next slide. These were just, you know, right away, we, Dr. Marty, I think it was around the same time that we were first getting news of the coronavirus, you know, right before spring break, and then we had to think of ideas to cut funds as well. So we came up with, you know, about one and a half or one million from, you know, expenditure side. And then fortunately, as the Board agreed to utilize the voluntary rollback of about 3 million to offset that 4.4 million drop. And these are all things we've implemented and put into our budget and, you know, the numbers that you're going to see later. Any questions on the fit? I know you're probably tired of hearing me talk about financial institution tax at this point.
I think it'd be interesting to make sure everybody understands the fact that we did not know what portion of the fit was Scott Trade beforehand. Can you just kind of reiterate the fact that we tried to get the information, did not know it until it was gone?
So at the day that, we've tried in the past without results. Because if, you know, if you look at that history, we were, there were some years where it would jump 2, 3 million. And we wanted to know why. We also knew Scott Trade was leaving and we wanted to know what the impact would so we could plan for future budgets. And they would always tell us, no, we can't say it. Patty had reached out to a lawyer who specializes in this and he contacted it. He had found it was actually against, in the state statute, it said it was illegal for them to disseminate any of the information. You know, the day the payment came in low, I reached out to him and I said, is this all we're going to get this year for sure? They will answer that. And then cryptically, they said, you know, your amount may include refunds. So then I replied back, didn't include any refunds from prior year returns? And then they said they weren't allowed to say that. But we don't, we don't even know if that 600, roughly 600,000 this year truly reflects, you know, the tax returns from that year or was it a million dollars we would have gotten, but 400,000 was a refund? Or some combination like that. All we know is we got the 590,000. That's all we can kind of plan on in the future. Our hope is it does go up a little bit, but I don't see any scenario where it ever goes back up to that 7 million level. Short of another bank coming into Parkway.
And just to add on that, it's not only Parkway that is unable to get the information. It's any taxing authority. So any school district that receives the funds were unable to receive that. And really, it's connected to their tax returns. So it's not being able to release any of their tax return information to taxing authorities. So going on then, our second impact is of course COVID and our economy. So right now, we know that we're on a situation where we have record unemployment within just a six-week period. How long that impact is going to last is truly unpredictable at this point in time. But with that, we still have to plan for what, what are the impacts for next year? So I thought it was easier to break it down as far as what we do know. And then what are some of our unknowns as we're approaching this? So right off the bat, Desi gave us some reassurance and supported the ADA in the formula. Meaning that they told us even if we had a shortened school year, that we would be okay financially because the calendar year would be shortened and so would the, essentially the attendance hours possible. So we would still be able to collect similar ADA on our formula. The governor last week, or maybe it was two weeks now, announced that for the current year, we would have a 7% reduction in our transportation funding. We know that sales tax has decreased this year. You know, most of the big box department stores are closed. Most restaurants are open for curbside pickup only. The only good thing is that we have had a lot of sales tax from grocery stores with people stocking up and such. But we don't know how long that dip will, will take effect. We also know that potentially our local tax will be impacted by this by potentially slow pay from our leaseholders or the owners of business or potentially non-payment. And we also look at future year protest settlement. Because even though this is not a reassessment year, what could happen is if businesses have decided potentially to move out of some spaces, rather retail or an office space and not return, in future years, the owner then could claim an investment and a rental change in income level, which would affect their, their assessment level. So with that, we have adjusted our collection rates downward as well. The other part to consider in this is just the thought that a lot of businesses now have comfort in being able to have employees that work remotely. So the unknown portion of that is when everybody does return to normal in that complete year from now or what that looks like. You know, will companies look at that and decide that they need less lease space? Will they have more employees that are actually working remotely? So what will that do to our long-term assessment levels? So we do know that we do have some protections in our formulas for that. Meaning that if there's actually a drop in assessment, that we would be able to roll up our tax rate to remain at the same level of income. But what that does cap is any of the growth in our income. We also know that interest rates literally dropped overnight to basically nothing. So one day we were collecting 1.65% on overnight funds. And the next day, we were collecting 12 basis points. So we have factored that into our next year as well. We've refunded everything with early childhood tuition for this end of the year. We've had very little food service revenue, only the federal revenue over the last few months. And then we have continued to pay our salaries and benefits. But the one good shining part in this year is that our local taxes, the collection has been very strong. In fact, we've had one report with settled claims from old protests. And even that report was extremely short, extremely shorter than each month's report that we have received in previous years. So we know that we'll, we'll finish the year still with our, we're hopeful that we'll finish the year still with our 0.25% growth. But what does that mean for next year? So Missouri budget, it's still being debated. I believe it's in the Senate now. The thought process is, you know, right now, they're, they're stating that they're fully funding the formula. However, what ends up in next spring when the revenues come, the Missouri revenues come in shorter than projected? We may be in a place where they put another proration factor on that formula. Also, we know the, the House version of the Missouri budget has a 17% drop in transportation funding. So while that's not a huge impact, that will impact some dollars on our budget. And then in these last final days, they have quite a few bills that they are trying to scrape the pieces together and, and pass. But one that's very weary to us is the potential of the Wayfair Act that took internet sales tax that's not currently charged and not have that apply to Prop C, but would have that go directly into the general revenue stream. So bypass school districts completely. And locally, what will be the impact? The same thing with some of the legislation. I was on the phone quite a bit today with Scott Kimball on some of the proposed legislation on property taxes, which included some caps and some guidelines specifically for St. Louis County. And the other part is how long will truly the, the impact of the stay-at-home orders be? And what kind of impact will that have on our local economy? And then the question is, how long will this last? So our last recession, I will say, was more like an L curve, where it was a downward slide in the economy. And then it was very flat to no growth for. and then it was very flat to no growth for quite a few years. Only in the past two years have we reached the same assessed valuation level that we were in two thousand eight. We're hopeful that the recovery is more like a U shape, that we had a sharp decline, and then hopefully, we're going to have a recovery that is just as quick. So going through just some recaps from fiscal year twenty, we've talked about quite a few of these, our increase in property taxes, our reduced expenses for some things such as our substitute costs, our food service purchases. Marlene and her team have done a yeoman's job of utilizing our actual inventory of, of food and resources in order to provide the meals for our students. We have reduced cab fees for our students in transition, and of course, savings from fuel and energy. We have reduction in expenditures during the closure too, which include student, student-related costs and purchases, because we have limited those. And at this time, like I said, it, it looks like we will make our two point two five percent fund balance growth. So after the budget was approved, so last month, we had brought the spring budget adjustments to you. And after that, we know that we did approve for the reducing of the summer school to a virtual program. And then the governor also had announced the seven percent reduction in transportation. So factors that go into our planning now for fiscal year twenty-one, we have first and foremost, of course, our impact from the financial institution tax, our expense reductions, and then the additional revenue with the use of the voluntary rollback. We have reduced our, our Prop C estimate. We used the one thousand fifteen in our original assumptions. Desi had used one thousand sixty-five, but we're going to do a, a ten percent reduction from there, and we're going to use nine hundred and fifty dollars per weighted ADA. So that is quite a big drop in our, our revenue line on Prop C. Local, we're going, our property taxes, we're going to remove the point five percent growth in CPI increase, and we're going to reduce the collection rate to ninety-six point two percent. Last year, when we did our recoupment calculations, I did not levy all of our possible recoupment funds, simply because it was our reassessment year, and if there were a lot of protests, you can't recoup the recoupment from the protests. So we do have three million in, in gross tax money on the commercial rate that I'm able to levy this year. The initial plans, of course, were to put that in the capital projects fund, but we will place that into the operating fund to help offset the loss of revenue from the Prop C. We will have the reduced interest rate, because we know that it'll take time for that interest rate to, to get back up over a percent. And we have made the adjustments for the Chromebook adjustments. Some is being purchased in this current year. And then they also had a complete look-through of not only the, the bid, the return on the bid, and some of the savings from the bidding process. And then I think second graders are going to keep devices, so they changed the number that would be refreshed as well. Included in here also are estimated costs for PPE for our returning employees. So for nursing, food service, and bus drivers, some PPE, because they will be a bit closer to, to students as well. And we've also taken into effect the reduced transportation revenue, and then we have learned of reduced community ed revenues as well. So with us not having a spring program through the Rockwood Parkway Community Ed Program, and most likely not a robust summer program, we have placed a, a reduction for that revenue. We report that a year in arrears, simply because of the timing of when we received the information from Rockwood. So for future years, as mentioned before, we've reduced that CPI growth, so that small growth in assessed valuation value, that could change based on our reality, but we, we didn't want to go too far negative, not knowing the true impact there. We decreased the collection rate. We have a very small growth in the Prop C of five dollars per year. And then state revenues are growing just at a slight increase based on enrollment changes. All that put together, we, this is our, our review of our, our revenues. Normally, we have about a one and a half to one point eight percent growth in our overall revenues from year to year. As you can see, we actually have an estimate of actually a decrease in revenues for three years before we have slight growth in those revenues. Like I said, this is just an estimate, and it is, of course, subject to change. But when we summarize and put this all in, we decide, okay, we know we still want our point two five percent growth. What are some of the things that, that we need to do in order to address that? And Brian, do you want to lead us through this part?
Sorry, my mic off. So let's pass it, of course, once our, with the revenues essentially going down every year, we do have to find cuts. We found the cuts related to the fit issue, like the timekeeping, lowering the contribution to the benefit or the health insurance plan, savings and voluntary background checks. But even with that, looking at future years, we do need to find additional cuts, you know, a million, twenty-five thousand for next year, which I don't want to speak too soon, but I feel like we've gotten very close to identifying all of them, if not a little more than needed. And then each year, that kind of grows, how much we need to identify as a cut. Fortunately, you know, it looks really bad on paper, you know, it goes from one million to five, seven, seven, five, but really, it's that difference. So we found that million cuts, so then the next year, it's really, you know, four million something that we need to cut. And then in twenty-three, it'll be again around four million we need to, you know, find, because once you find the cut, it kind of lowers your baseline going forward. But those are substantial, and, you know, it's more about us being proactive compared to reactive. You know, if you look at the history, that chart we have where it shows the expenditures going over revenues, it's really just because we acted, we acted a couple of years too late to what's going on, and I think, you know, we're trying to be proactive this time. The next slide kind of shows the big impact. If we add that to the revenue slide from before, plus these expenditures with the, you know, identified reductions we need to make, that will allow us to have a small gain in fund balance every year and keep that fund balance growth point two five percent. You know, it's going to be lower gains than we've had in the last few years, but that's the expected, you know, the last few years. We're in a growing economy, things were doing well. That's really when you build up your fund balances for times like this.
And one of the major impacts that, that could sway this pretty quickly is the Prop C numbers, and, you know, where that sales tax revenue really rebounds to, and how quickly that rebounds. That can impact pretty quickly some of these numbers.
For sure. Are you going to, property tax collection rate goes up, there's, you know, there's so many factors that could impact it.
And so here is where we end up with our graph. So as you can see, it is pretty level in those last few years. We have worked on estimates of what it looks like if we have a zero percent growth in those years too. And it reduces the amount that we would have to cut by about a half a million each year. And why just a half million? We, because our expenditure number is still growing, and the fund balance percentage is taking the, the ending operating fund balance divided by the total expenditures, it takes more of a fund balance each year in order to get the same fund balance, the fund balance percentage each year. So that's why it's only a difference of about a half a million. So just to summarize before we wrap, in wrapping this up, so we are fairly, fairly confident on how we're going to finish this year. We're still waiting on, on guidance from Desi on stimulus funds. We got a notification today that there's a webinar on Monday on that. Brian's already submitted paperwork in our application process for a SEMA FEMA grant that specifically will perhaps cover some PPE supplies, some technology, our devices for our, our wireless, and perhaps even some of our, our cleaning of devices when they come back in. It'll also cover some of the overtime that we have experienced over the closure. We know we're going to face many challenges this, this upcoming year. We just don't know what all they will be yet. And we're uncertain how long this recession will be and how long it takes for the recovery. It could change our commercial real estate needs, you know, perhaps, you know, there's going to be less of a need for office space. Perhaps businesses are going to come back and they want more space, because they realize they need to spread their employees out more. We just really don't know. So we've, we've presented a possible outcome, but the, the actual changes will vary. So we just need to be mindful of the impacts of the economy and be ready to make cuts in our expenditures as needed. And we know that, we'll know more in the upcoming months, once we all get back to work and we know what recovery and return to business looks like. And as we look into that next year for fiscal year twenty-two, we'll, we'll meet early on in the fall to determine, you know, what are some potential cuts. But we're also going to be mindful of what our strategic plan is. Make sure that we don't make cuts that steer us away from our goals of the district and our goals for our students. When we were looking at the financial institution tax, it was easy to pinpoint ten percent reduction in travel, ten percent reduction in supplies, because they didn't seem to directly impact the students in the classroom. So unfortunately, if we have to make a five million dollar cut, we know that it will be impacted somewhat, but we want to make that as least impactful to the education environment that we can. And once again, we want to be proactive and not reactive. Any questions?
Patty, my audio cut out for a minute. Can you repeat all that?
Sure. From which page? From number one?
I, I do have one question. You mentioned the PPP, PPE equipment for nurses, food services, and bus drivers. What about teachers, especially those who teach our younger grades, where they're typically closer contact with our younger students?
So we have not worked through all of that yet. I know in some of our scenarios, we have discussed that the teachers would come to school with masks on. We have talked about really the, the impact of everyone wearing a mask as well. Like, you don't get to see a smiling face. If you have a hearing problem, you wouldn't necessarily be able to, to, to understand it very well. So we haven't gone into, to big discussions on, on teachers in masks and students in masks. We've talked more about them being social distanced from one another. And I mean, that's part of our reentry planning. I don't know, Keith, if you want to add some more to that?
Well, I, I don't know. I think Robin has indicated to you that about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars would be good, right Patty, for nets made in frontline people? So we're probably looking at other alternatives, as Patty said, for educators, and part of it would be social distancing primarily, and obviously, you know, maintaining activities that would, would look different. If we start, you know, if we're having to mask and have equipment for our teachers, that, that would get pretty costly, and I think it would affect, as Patty said, some of the things that go into education. So it's not that we want, or, I mean, we, we still have a lot to talk about, but I think our primary need right now are certainly our, our health staff, and I think our custodians and others who do the cleaning. Patty, I don't know if there's other staff we're kind of thinking about, but potentially bus drivers, I think, that may be on the frontline.
The other thing we're looking at is the possibility of adding Plexiglas in our buses, like potentially behind the bus driver, and perhaps something that swivels right by the bus driver's face, so that, you know, protects not only the student, but, but the bus driver as well. But we would never want to trap the bus driver in case there's any type of an accident. So we have to work with the DOT on that too, to have something that is, or the Missouri Highway, I guess Patrol would be the one that would need to approve it, to make sure that, you know, it is something that would pass inspection as well. The other thing that we're looking at is potentially in our reception areas of adding a piece of Plexiglas, so that as visitors come, that we have a little bit of a separation there as well. So just looking at different alternatives. So we've, we've begun the reentry planning, but not everything is, is thoroughly designed yet.
I just want to say too, that we, we, I was on a pretty lengthy call this morning with superintendents from the region through at Plus. And I think we're, we as, we as districts agreed this morning that we're, we're not going to do this alone. We're going to, well, Parkway is developing some reentry. This isn't, we were going to rely on the health department. We actually have a group of superintendents that are going to be meeting with the health department to see if the health department will agree to be able to be consultants for us in the short and long term. So again, we're going to try to operate as a region, not Parkway feeling like we're by ourselves. And if Robin and myself or others need to make decisions, we want to have the backing of the health department to make those decisions. So whether it's how we, you know, conduct our, our school day to how we do transportation, we're, we're looking for advice and help. We did have an opportunity to talk to national speakers the last couple of weeks in SAT, and so this discussion is going on all over the country. A lot of considerations already, from how people are thinking about doing staggering the school day, to thinking about programs and travel and all those considerations. So that's all part of some of our reentry work, which we want to share with the board here in the next couple of weeks.
Patty, I would, I would say a couple of, a couple of questions. One is, is there somebody within the district that's continuing to assess opportunities for other revenue sources like grants that would help with any of the programs that we have, or the, any of the COVID-related matters, so that we can help funnel some additional revenues our way that we currently maybe don't have? And then the second item to discuss is the travel. I know that right now, the reduction is at ten percent, but it seems that even in, for FY twenty-one budget, that any travel related to a convention, or airline, or lodging would just be off the books right now. I mean, just from a COVID standpoint, but where would we, you know, find if there's truly essential travel, how could that be defined? That we would need to do that, but then moving forward even into the out years, really making, you know, some drastic changes to, to that, because it just seems like that is an area that we could really make some headway in and, and helping with some additional cuts.
Yeah, so let me address your, your first question on additional revenue sources, grants, et cetera. So we know through Desi that we will be receiving money through the CARES Act program. And we know that the allocation will be similar to our Title I funding. What we don't know, and we know the twelve things that it can be spent on, what we don't know is our exact dollar amount and what we will really be spending it on. The other portion of that is even though Title I funds go to the students that are greatest in need, that these funds won't necessarily be student-related and focused on our greatest need students. It'll really be on our operations per se. But we also know that public entities, or public funding entities will receive part of this, meaning- meaning that our non-public schools that are in the district will also receive a portion of this. And so we don't know our breakdown yet. So it's much easier for us instead of putting a speculation into the budget and having, you know, the the revenue source in there and it all changing, instead of doing any of that, we've left both of those components out. And so in the fall, when we receive all of that, we'll add that in. The same thing, we have started the application process for the SEMA FEMA grant. Brian's been collecting the data for that as far as our overtime, some of the spending from technology, et cetera. But I think we even have an extended deadline to turn in all of those those items until closer to the return to work period. So we are actively seeking that. And certainly, the grants position was, which, you know, Patrick Shelton is in. You know, normally that is the position that looks for additional income and such. So I'm sure that, you know, our all of our eyes and ears are open. I know I speak almost on a daily basis with my colleagues nationally, you know, on what they've learned from their federal aid that has come through, you know, in their particular states. And then, like I said, we're we're still waiting for that that final guidance and amounts from from Desi. Go ahead.
Speak a little bit to the to the next question. I'll let you take a breath for a second.
All right.
Debbie, that's really, you know, it's a great question. I think one of the hesitancies we have as a SAT group, as we've been talking about conferences, is to assume that all that money could be, you know, be cuts, that we want to really think about PD differently. And that a lot of our PD, we really got to think about the professional development locally. If we're going to truly do, if we happen to be learning or some kind of blended learning, we have to do it better. And we're going to, it's going to be more intensive training for our teachers. So I think rather than think those dollars, whether it's conferences or travel and all that, would simply just be deviated or eliminated. I think we're thinking about those dollars being used probably locally for our own staff development or for, you know, more kinds of ways that we have to think differently about the way we're doing business. So obviously, we can make some additional cuts, but I don't think all of it needs. I mean, we really, we just have to think about development differently. I agree, there there should be very little travel to conferences, a lot of it. And and yet there will be, there'll be virtual conferences, so there'll be some registration fees associated those kind of conferences. I think the, for example, the Missouri School Board Association, I think, is thinking about its conference being virtual in Kansas City, the first Kansas City venture next year, we were going to have is could be virtual. So Patty, I don't know if you have any other thoughts, but Debbie, good, good question. But I think we're also cautious because PD, we have a lot of PD to do to get our teachers and and our our students and, I mean, our whole system differently.
Yeah, I mean, almost exactly what I was going to say. The other portion of that is there are times that people have made plans for perhaps July conferences, et cetera. And with COVID, not everything is refundable. So especially if airfare was already booked, I'll use me as an example. I had Eagle Institute planned in July. The conference was canceled, so they'll refund or let me apply that toward next year. But the airfare, they only gave me a credit toward that and only in my name. So the district still has money that had to pay for that. So, you know, I have this credit setting out there that I think I have eighteen months in order to utilize. So it would be hard to eliminate all of that. And as Keith mentioned, there are a number of conferences that have taken on a virtual feel to it too. So Brian and I were scheduled to do the state audit conference, school audit conference in April. And now it's being rescheduled. I forget the exact days, but it's all going to be virtual now too. But it also offers us a few extra options too. So some of it, it's a little added flexibility as well.
Thank you.
Obviously, there's going to be tough decisions that we need to make about both reopening on that side of things and how that structure and schedule looks depending on how the county decides to open up and what the recommendations are. But then also on these budget things. And I would just assume we're doing this implicitly, but maybe be explicit on how we use an equity lens to make our decisions and how we're explicit in our racial equity lens in particular in some of our decisions and really thinking through who's disproportionately impacted, depending on decisions that we make and just really checking our work in that regard, because obviously, you know, different school day structures impact different families differently, depending on the kinds of jobs people are working, all those things. So I I just raised that because I think it's just something we should be making sure that we're we're attentive to in terms of disproportionate impact. So not that any decision's easy.
Chrissy, you're absolutely right. Every every, we've heard it from the last two national speakers we had, Ray McNulty, Bill Daggett. There is just a very big concern and fear that the that the gap is widening, that many students are doing fine with e-learning, maybe even some, you know, depending on the environment, are doing really well. And that there are some that aren't. And that's going to be true of Parkway, it's going to be true of of our own students. So thank you, yes, we have to think about equity issues. There's this, this has caused us and the nation to be really concerned about leaving kids even further behind in some cases.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate that Patty brought up with the the masks. It's so easy for us to go like, oh, everyone should wear a mask. But then you think about some of our students with disabilities and like, if our teacher puts a mask on, they that cuts off their ability to learn. And it's, you know, really thinking through those lenses forces us to to recognize those things. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think of the teacher's relationship with the child, not not seeing the child's expression. You know, I've I've done a few online webinars and it's, it is like today. I get to see each of your faces as I'm presenting this. But if I'm presenting just online, I can't see my audience. And so it's really hard to detect that. So I think of the teacher, you know, checking to see if the children are are learning, if they're getting it. And they can't see their face, they can't, they can see their eyes, but not their face. And I can just see that, you know, there's a lot of connection that's lost and it it isn't a true relationship. You know, it just seems like it's more of a barrier.
Right.
Sorry about my dog. She seems to really like to be in here when I talk about budget.
Anyone have any other questions for Patty or Brian?
Not a question, just to commend you all. I know that you've got a lot of moving pieces and variables to juggle as you try to put all this together in some unexpected circumstances. So well done, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. And we do a lot of collaboration. You know, Brian and I will throw things at each other like, what if, what if, what if? I mean, I I have excellent respect and everything else for Brian and his abilities. And I love how we work together so well and stuff too. I mean, he's just excellent.
It was a smart move to lock him in a basement until they figured this all out.
Good luck getting me out.
Really fortunate Patty, of course, as she mentioned, is, you know, connected nationally and certainly statewide. She's a leader, is a leader, has been a leader. And so her her contacts are really important, yeah, as she is aware of what's going on in so many different districts, but also what's going on legislatively and what's going on with the federal government and monies and and the monies available. So we're really fortunate to have Patty and and Brian, both of them in the in the roles.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you both very much. We have no special meeting tonight. We have no further closed meeting. The next anticipated closed session will be held on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Details of the closed session will be posted within twenty four hours of the anticipated meeting. So may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for your participation tonight remotely. Thanks for anyone who's watching. And we hope to have a meeting in person in the near future, whenever that is allowed. Anyway, have a have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
Take care. Good night.